Nathan.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Public opinion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the Senate agenda.
Sarah, I have some changes.
Um, yeah, we need to move, I'm proposing that we move, which one is that, Brandon?
Six F's.
Six F and G.
Six F up to...
And G.
And G.
And G up to five, replacing it with five A.
Do the Senate June without those changes. One second. Motion, one second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public info, this is time and place for discussion items, not on the agenda, but the time limit of three minutes each. All right. Public hearing on status of funded activities for CBG programs. A motion to go into public hearing?
Move.
A motion, one second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I just have heard the guidelines for the CBG housing program to read the status of funded activities or self-hearing, so those are as follows. The purpose of this hearing is to consider the status of funded activities for the Housing Realization Program for Lisbon, Iowa, as assisted by the Community Development Block Grant, CBG Program, Program Contract Number eighteen dash HSG dash thirteen. It is noted that for a general description of the composition to date, CBG housing grant at the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars was awarded to the city of Lisbon from the Iowa Economic Development Authority. With the release of funds issued on November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the city contributed an additional eleven thousand dollars local match to program to cover additional administrative technical services and nine thousand dollars to cover land hazards for the program. Summary of expenditures to date through May twenty twenty-one, a total of one hundred forty-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-nine cents has been invoiced, one hundred five thousand nine hundred eighty-two of that was for construction and thirty-six thousand three hundred ninety-eighty-nine cents for grant administration technical services. Construction items included were not limited to replacing the siding, windows, doors, and flooring, general electrical, plumbing and mechanical work, as well as land reduction items. General description of remaining work, three properties have been relocated to date, three more properties remain to be relocated, and with an award completion date for August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, it is anticipated an extension will be needed due to COVID, as well as material contractor availability. General description of changes made to the project or budget, performance targets, activities, schedules, project scope, location, objectives, or beneficiaries, no changes or amendments as of yet, but an extension will likely be filed, and we are looking to do an amendment for the target area, which we will talk about later. And that's all I have.
Before you sit down?
Yep.
The long and short of that, so we've done three houses, you have three more that have already been approved, or you have money for three more?
We have money for three more.
But we don't have applications for three more, or we do have applications that they haven't approved, and that's why we need to make sure.
So there have been some people that have called, that have been outside of the target area. Some people have called and applied anyway, and some people have called and told them they're outside the target area and didn't apply. So he has three applications currently in hand that are outside of the current target area. We talked today, and I thought it was fair that we reopen it, so that everybody has an opportunity to put in their applications, do it on a first come, first served. He will call the three that he has.
Wait a second, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
To reapply, and then go from there. But we'd have to extend that area. His recommendation was extended to the entire city, so the block where it's at, or whatever we see fit, but...
Right. So when you say first come, first served, we're not taking the three that we already have that really won in the target area ahead of other ones that could apply once we open up the target area?
No, so we open it all up, then Mark would call and tell them they have to reapply, and then the first three that would apply then will get it.
It kind of is a gray, kind of odd area, because even though we have three applicants, others were told they could not apply.
Right.
They're outside, so to make it fair, and, you know, that way everybody has the same choice.
We just wanted it fair for everybody.
Do we know the people that were told that they could not apply because they were outside the area, do we know their names?
I know that there was two, and I know for sure one of them applied anyway. I just don't know, I can find out if Marcia knows.
Because if we're going to give the people that applied a heads up that it's being opened up to another area, they get a chance to apply, we should give that person a heads up as well.
Sure, sure.
Because they would have an unfair advantage to be notified if everybody else was...
I'll check with Marcia, I'm sure she'll know who to talk to. I know that there was two, and I know that she explained one of the addresses, which was just outside of the area, and so I know that that address is one of them, but I don't know if the second one is one of the other two that he...
I mean, you see what I'm saying, right? We're going to contact these three and say, hey, we're opening up the area now, come fill out an application, but we're not going to do that to anybody else in the area. They're not going to get a notification like that, they're just going to have to come upon it naturally like they normally would.
We'll contact the people that's been asked about it.
Mark, if you had, let's say you would have had six all within the target area, what would be your determining factors?
It would have been, at the time they were applying for.
So first come, first served.
That one as well, within the target area. So I'd say if we're opening it back up, and we do expand the target area, which I would like to panel over that, I would say do whatever would normally be done, put on your Facebook page, on your website, just as would normally, and hopefully we reach as many people as possible. And we'll reach out to the ones that we have a name and hope for.
There you go, is there any questions? A motion to go into public hearing?
So moved, second.
A motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on possible action on status of funded activities for the CBG, CDVG programs. Now what it is, is the city of Lisbon is seeking an amendment to our owner occupied housing rehabilitation program. Request is to expand the target area to include the entire city. The city was awarded money to complete six homes, to date, three homes have been completed within the budget, within the target area, with no other eligible applicants within the target area. We have received numerous interest outside that current target area, the city would like to extend the target area so they can complete the six home program that was awarded. Thank you for consideration of this request. If you have any questions regarding the amendment, please contact our project administrator. Motion to expand it?
Yes, motion.
A motion, second. Motion, second, Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Can I say something before we move to vote? I just want to add that I understand why we're doing it, and I completely agree that we need to do it, but what I'm saying to you guys is, is that when you open it up to the whole town, you very likely could get a lot of applications from people who weren't eligible before, or hadn't heard about it before, whatever, and we're automatically giving three people, which is all we're going to take, an immediate head start. And I just want that on the record somewhere, so that when they all start calling in, and we wonder why we can't take more than three, we realize the problem that we just caused. I'm not sure that the whole city is a good... So I'm going to vote aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
All right, that's it.
Okay.
You want to do it?
Yes, I agree.
All righty. Thank you very much. Approval of pay warrants that come in after consummating prior to June thirtieth fiscal year point one.
Motion to approve paying stuff that comes in after the meeting, but before the end of the fiscal year.
Got a motion, one, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Improvement, improvement payment to Travis for completed work on downtown reinvestment grant.
Motion to approve payment.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proof payment to DOD for completed work on downtown reinvestment grant.
Motion to approve.
I'm second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're done, Dorothy, you can get off now. Discussion on possible action on Barnes at Myers Armstead.
So I sent out last week, the historic preservation had the historic structural engineer come out to give their report and analysis, I sent that out ahead of time, and then I also forwarded the preservation commission, wanted to send out some bullet points, and I sent that out in the fact as well. And I don't know if, I see many of them are here today, so I didn't know if any of them wanted to speak, or if you all had questions for them. I, my recommendation would be to get some estimates on securing the buildings and fixing the roofs, see what, what the cost of everything's going to be to do that.
That seems like the best next last step, is put that out for bid, if that's appropriate, you know.
Of course. I know that the structural engineer from the insurance company and the insurance adjuster both said that needed done before anybody was to be on the roofs repairing. And I think, instead of securing the roofs, I think the bid should also include just fixing the roofs, so that they're not going to cause more damage than they already have.
Is there a safe way to do that without a lot of extra expense? Get a lift and have the person tethered to the lift, so if anything happens, the person up on the lift is safe.
I can check into that.
Then I think it would look better if we got those holes in the roof covered.
I can get a separate quote just to get that going before they start handing out.
It says the immediate repairs are estimated between forty to sixty thousand.
Right.
Where does this money go come from?
So currently, right now, we've received forty-five thousand from insurance, and I believe we're going to get a total of sixty-three thousand from insurance for those barns, but at that point they would be considered totaled and not insurable until, you know, I don't know if they fix them up and get it back to where they were insured again.
We need to know that. If they're ever going to be insurable again, or if they're never going to be insurable again, because that, in a public park setting, that could be a big problem.
If you put a lot of money into them, then they'd be insured. Put some money into them, they'd be insurable for that amount, I would think. They would never, I've never heard of insurance company completely turning down something if there's still value there that they have already paid you for.
Does the, does the city's liability insurance, you know, cover, you know, some basics, not the barns, obviously?
Yeah, it covers if somebody gets hurt, or...
So we, yeah, we have liability coverage if somebody gets hurt, but we're talking barns.
Right, I understand, yeah.
You know, if a storm was to come back through and cause more damage...
Right, would it be insured as far as any more damage?
I believe that's what they're talking about.
Well, that, or if somebody's standing in one of them or something, and it collapses or something, you know, we...
Well, that's your liability.
That's your liability.
But would that cover... Fixing it again? It falling, since we knew that it was not...
That's separate from damage to the building. Those are two separate, you have liability coverage.
But what I'm asking you is, would our insurance cover it, knowing that there was damage there, if we don't fix everything?
Yeah, still your liability coverage. So you have liability coverage, and then you have structural coverage.
I understand your question, is that if we're, if we know that they're not stable, and we let someone go in there and they get hurt...
Like, for example, I'm watching this collapse that happened in Florida, right?
Right.
And they're saying they have this big report where there were all these, this damage, and nobody did anything about it. So that's my question. Is our insurance going to come back to us and say, you guys knew this wasn't structurally sound, and you still let people go in there?
Well, they told us not to let anybody in there, so I'm not going to let anybody in there until they give us the green light to let people in there.
Yeah, it'll leave you...
They'll have to go through inspection.
A contractor that would have reason to be in those buildings to do something for us, they may also have their insurance, and workman's comp.
And I'm just playing the devil's advocate here, because I just want to know the answers, but you got a group of kids over there fishing or whatever, and they get on their bikes and they're taking off, and something happens to the barn, and all the stuff falls down on top of them as they're riding their bike past it.
That's, that's your liability coverage.
And we would be covered for that, even though we know that there's problems.
Well, and these, these did go through a derachio and didn't pull the house off.
And a tornado a hundred years ago.
These are all the questions that I've been asking, and we've been talking about, and I haven't really dug completely into the weeds on all the schematics of it yet, because I don't know to what extent, and how soon, what's going to be fixed, and then figuring out, okay, you know, at what point can you insure those buildings, if you can insure those buildings ever again, for just the damage. But I know that liability will cover anything that happens now, as long as we don't permit somebody to go inside, that's what being told on.
Because some of the stuff that he listed in here for the cost that we, that he didn't cover is getting padlocks and, you know, closing off doors and such, that kids can't get in there. You know, they all, there's, there's one door where they could, you know, I could, I could swing right through there, so that, you know, that sort of thing needs to happen for the protection of the kids going over to the pond, you know, anyone. But if it's sixty-three thousand, we're well within what he thought the high dollar of stabilizing all three of them, and, and then we can start working, trying to get grants to do more and more, but that would stabilize them, and get those roofs covered so that water's not getting in there and adding more damage.
My initial thought process is to take the insurance money and do that stuff with it, because that's what it's for, but I have a secondary thought that, you know, we purchased these buildings knowing that they were older, and we took responsibility for them, and some way, somehow, I think it's the city's responsibility to get them back to what they were initially purchased for. And I have the answer to how we do that right now, today, as I sit here, but I'm just saying, the long-term end goal should be that.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I mentioned, I think the first step is just to get some contractors over there to get some bids to see what it is we're looking at.
Now, the first thing we need to do is the roofs.
Yeah.
There ain't no sense in working inside to get the roofs done.
First thing you do on a building, yeah.
Is the foundation is secure?
No.
So I guess when you build a house, the first thing you do is work on the foundation. So I would be more concerned about the foundation, because the roof's not going to stay if the foundation's not done completely.
Yeah, they should just keep happening.
I mean, is that logical thinking?
Well, I, I think that securing the roof eliminates future damage, your brain coming in still through the roof, and the, the foundation and those posts that are rotten, that's a slow process for...
I don't think it really matters, though, if the foundation is bad, one storm comes through, if the foundation is bad, then the new roof comes off, and then we've got more problems. I think securing the foundation is probably your best, first and foremost, when you build any kind of house, whether you work on roofs.
Well, you start with the foundation, but we have a completed structure.
Right, but...
I would go with the experts that have already looked at it, number one.
I see your point, you mean both.
You do, you do, you do need to...
But there's also, if we, if we do a quick patch on the roofs and not do a new roof at the beginning, so we can get it closed up, you know, then we can, then we can be working on the foundation and other structural, so then we can come back and put new roofs on it.
I'd say any foundation issues that are in that first category should be addressed, of course.
Right, and so, you know, like, and the, the cost that he had was, was just to repair the damage on the roof, not doing new roofs, that's where all the money's going to go, is for that. And I think at this point, if we patch the roof, then we're stopping the water coming in, and then, and then we can start working on the structural, the, the foundation and the rest of the structure to keep, get them stabilized, thank you. And so then we can go, and then start, you know, our next logic step would be to go and get bids and see what it's going to cost to do real roof work.
What about the security issues? I mean, should we erect a fence around it until we get everything shored up, the lock the doors?
I'm kind of wondering if we should actually be shutting that park down until we have some of this done, and the reason that I ask that is, I understand that it withstood derachio, but it's also now been compromised, and so it's probably weaker than it was when derachio did it. And so I don't know how much activity happens over there, how many people are visiting or enjoying that park on a daily basis, but I just kind of wonder if maybe we should be shutting that park off for the short term, until we know something.
Going over to the pond, yeah.
Well, Steve and Mary Ann live over there, I mean, do you see kids like going around those barns and stuff much?
I don't see that, I see them like at the pond. Yeah.
Yeah, if you want to look at liability, the pond's probably a bigger liability than those bars.
So we can beat this round, what do you guys want to do?
So that list of items that needed to be fixed right away, the critical issues that we talked about, didn't that have a little bit of all of it, the foundation, the roof?
Yes.
So if we did it, we're hitting all of the main parts anyway, right?
Right.
So...
I hope, I mean, we won't know that until the contractor comes in and actually fits it out and, and see what we're looking at. I mean, with the cost of lumber and the cost of everything else right now, it could be more than sixty-three thousand.
Well, that's something else is talking to people that, and we're looking for more, if anyone hears this. Anybody's had a damaged barn, maybe they're not going to repair it, so that we could get older materials that match that barn, that are in good shape, and use some of that and see if they would donate that, because these, these costs include the cost of lumber.
Donating materials would be a write-off for taxes, being that they're donating to the city.
Well, I think we need to move forward, I mean, we need to take...
Oh, I agree, I just want to make sure that we're moving forward on the right repairs, first. Motion, and Brandon, I'm going to make a motion to direct...
Can I add something quickly? I think it's important for you to remember that when the Lisbon Historic Preservation Commission submitted its budget request for the new fiscal year, we asked for additional funding to hire someone to prepare a preservation plan for the Myers barns, and so that money is included in our budget, and you recall that we did the same thing with the History Center Building and with the Library Building, and by having those preservation plans in hand, we have a blueprint for priorities, and this blueprint is provided to us by a historic preservation professional, that's a multiple. And so that preservation plan will guide you as you plan ahead, just as it did for the Library Building and the History Center Building, and these are phased projects, we realize they, they cannot and will not be done all at once. The other thing I'd like to add is that I know that the city is working on a capital improvement plan and a comprehensive plan, and so I would ask that the barns be included, or that Myers Armstead Historic District be included in any of those discussions and any of those documents that result from the development of those plans. Again, it helps us move forward in a planful way.
I'm going to make a motion to direct Brandon to get quotes to, to start with the immediate repairs, the stuff that's needed for safety, security, that kind of stuff. And separate from those quotes, do what you need to do to secure those barns, so that people can't get into them, the padlocks, the fencing, whatever it is that you and Travis think are a good solution to keep people out of them and save.
Oh, they're padlocked now, or are they any... Everything's pretty well wired.
Well, that's not, if Becky can get through.
I won't...
I'm just saying, Becky's...
It's in the bottom panel of the door.
I could fit under it, but, I get the point, yeah, we'll...
Not that I have, by the way.
Yeah, we'll, we'll secure it, but yes, all the doors right now are secured. And it's a little tricky to get, the doors I can't get into, like, that are supposed to open, so. I'll second that.
Got a motion, the second. Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Can I add one thing after this, after that, is that, Brandon, did you want, I was wondering, because you had, you do a motion, did you include the bill from the preservation arm, or...
Already paid that.
Oh, no, I have to go.
Nope.
Never mind.
We, we actually talked last time to approve that, so...
Oh.
So Mary Ann and Steve, you see people putting on the barn deal on? Discussion on possible action in reference to trees at Bunnings Field. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the row of evergreen trees that when you pull into Bunnings Field, as you enter the parking lot, along 4L, they're along 4L. So the fence that's through there, Dan had reached out to me to come over and look at the trees, because they were growing through the fence, and he was tired of hitting his head on the branches, so I told Travis to went over there, and essentially those trees are infringing on that fence, and they're starting to bend the chain link and what have you, and it's eventually just going to keep causing problems, so Travis would like to take those down, and then move those, plant another row, I don't know how many feet, three feet, four feet farther from the...
Basically what we're going to do is, we're going to use, we're going to use those evergreens as basically keep people from parking alongside there anyways, and what's happened is, they've, they've actually matured to about their lifespan, they've been there long enough. We do have to take one down, if you remember, they came last year and wanted us to take them down, we went over, we looked at them, they looked good, well, that was before the storm, there's a couple of them that are splitting.
These are everybody's, right?
Yeah.
Dan talked, Dan talked to me last year, too, he says they were scraping on his building.
Well, we've cleaned that up, but now in order to clean it up, we're pretty much going to, we're going to damage so much of the tree that it's going to die if I try to clean it up and get it out of the fence. So to me, the, the best scenario would be to remove the trees, move them where they're planted closer to the bunting, so it still creates that vegetation wall that we're looking for, and acts as a parking barrier to keep that traffic area clean through there.
And you're not moving close enough that we'll have a problem with them?
No.
I would take the radius plus five feet to make sure they don't cause trouble in the future.
And is there room to do that?
It's going to be close, but we're redoing it. If we ever do do the Highway thirty project, we're widening that out through there anyways, so we got room to, to move. That's where some of our millings are going to go.
If you're widening it, then that's not, you have less room?
Widening it towards that and forward, to give us more room on the side.
Well, there are varieties that don't get quite as big as this standard.
Nate, you want to do anything?
Couldn't we just put benches or something there? We don't want to put right there.
We don't have to put trees, I assume that's what council wanted, because they want...
I'm just saying, you're thinking of all the bad things that can happen in the future, and that's where you visit, but...
Well, I mean, it's, it's either that, or we don't plant anything, and then we put in slats in the chain link fence, so you can't see through it, those plastic slats that you see, and do red and black through there.
Well, for now, I'll move that, you can go ahead and remove what's there, and then you can come back to us, let us know what variety, and what do you think will work best.
A motion?
Yes.
A motion, there, second?
Second.
All in favor?
So this is just to remove, nothing else?
Correct.
Remove and propose what to do next.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on possible action on stump grinder, Travis will go with you, too.
I will want to say first, though, one of you had requested last time to look into the cost of grinding, so there's kind of three options there. The first option is two hundred dollars a tree, that doesn't include any cleanup, so we'd have to have two guys follow the stump grinder as they went through town cleaning up the trees. That total's going to be around forty thousand dollars, and obviously we'll have to help there, and then we figured about four thousand dollars for dirt and seed to regrow the, you know, make the, the topsoil, put all that back, so forty-four thousand. Correct. Uh, so option B, uh, for four hundred dollars a tree, they will come clean up and do everything. So that would be eighty thousand plus the four for eighty-four thousand. And then the third option would be, um, Travis found a stump grinder, um, I was on Jessup. What's that?
Goes on a skid loader?
Yeah, it goes on a skid loader. Um, I had Travis call a guy and explain to him how many trees we had, explain to him they're all different sizes and how this would work and. He can't keep them on the shelf. He says everybody's, they're, I mean, the price point on it's perfect too. These have a, it's a new cutting. It's not a carbide one. They call it a green twos cutter where you actually can rotate it three times before you gotta replace it. So you get twice the life, if not three times the life out of that versus a carbide. Um, he basically says that with those teeth, it cuts the normal stump grinding time down at least thirty percent. He said he'd go more, but he goes, he says it's all a half. He's pretty sure of. And we have no problems.
Were we originally told that the stump grinder was gonna be a lot more money?
No.
No. I know, but I'm just trying to think if it was only six thousand dollars to begin with.
I don't think we know.
Why they were.
I don't think we've ever talked about stump grinder.
I don't know.
We were always gonna. We were gonna run.
You were gonna run.
So what was that gonna cost?
So the renting was going to be, um, three thousand a week or a month. Um, and I figured we'd need it for twenty days till you do about ten trees a day, two hundred trees. So twenty days would be what everybody typically works roughly here a day within a month. So I would think that that would designate everybody to that for the entire month and weather and everything. So I figured two months worth. So that was going to be six thousand plus the four thousand for the grass and the dirt. So that was gonna be a ten thousand dollar option, uh, if we went that way. This is gonna be cheaper and we'll have a piece of equipment for the trees at Bunning Field now. And, you know, any, the ash trees that still need to come down, there's still derachio trees that have to come down.
I, um, I like this idea just for the civil fact, you know, if they have a problem down at the sewer pipe and they need to work down there, like we have a stump grinder rented, it's not sitting idle. I mean, that's, we, we owned this. They can do these. We don't have to grind every one of these trees up right now.
Right, this can take rest of the year.
They could work on it for the rest of the year.
Motion to approve the purchase of the stump grinder?
Second.
Motion of second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Discussion of possible action on paint sprayer.
You guys should have paperwork on the sprayer. And then Brandon said he also printed you off the same sprayer. On, did you get that to him?
No, I have to do it all.
Okay. So the, this sprayer is more designed for larger areas like airports and that. Um, we're kind of in between a walk-in unit and a truck mounted unit. Um, the truck mounted unit isn't ideal for all the parking areas and stuff that we have to do. It's more for highways. This will, it's a stand-on one, just like the, um, one was our. It'll drop the beads, the reflective beads in it, have everything, goes six miles an hour. So for somebody to paint one end of the town, it's not like they're gonna have to walk it all the way back to get more paint. They were tying stuff up. He can drive it back, you know. Nobody, nobody makes a machine like this, so it was hard for me to price them out differently. We did find on the internet that this machine was going for twenty-seven. Twenty-seven, six seventy-nine. That's through Pittsburgh Paint Company. That's the only difference. It's the same, same machine. We just did some comparable looking to see what it cost elsewhere.
By this, by this picture, does it, could you run two different colors at a time? Or is it a one color?
It's a one color. We could get a different tank option if you wanted. That other tank, the round tank on top, the clear one, our white one, is for the glass beads that you gotta have in your white lines to be reflective to see on my night. Uh, I don't know how we're gonna do Highway 30 without, without something.
How you paying for it?
What?
How you paying for it?
Well.
Anybody? No?
We put, how much was in our budget? Uh, fifteen. Fifteen was in our budget. And then I would talk to Brandon on either using local option sales tax. Our hope was that, uh, project was gonna come in less because when we were talking budget time, the numbers we were getting from what we thought the Highway 30 project was gonna cost, we thought we'd have enough cushion to do it and turned out not. So Brandon says he thinks we can find it in the budget. So the, the thought was the chipper too, you know, we're getting a thousand dollars a tree. And when we bought the wood, or the, that's the chipper, I'm sorry, the stump grinder, you know, some of that money, the difference by saving, that's saving seventy thousand dollars of what we had originally thought it was gonna cost to have somebody come in and grind the stump. So why we wanted to do the stump grinder option was to buy some equipment. So I think, you know, when you sit down and figure all this out, we're, we're saving money to grind all our stumps. We have several that are down. We've got a thousand dollars a tree. And, um, that's a pretty significant amount of money that we received. So I think this is some of the equipment where you can use. We already budgeted fifteen. We would need, what's the difference? Twelve?
What do we use now? I mean, how do we do it now?
The one we have now is, is not operable. We babied it along. We can't get parts for it. It's old. It's a lock behind. Um, they actually robbed parts, from Sherwin-Williams robbed parts out of one of their old machines to get us going last year to do just a few of the lines. Um, if you look at the lines, and it's kind of hard now, they're worn out. They're not straight anymore. They go like this. Cause the pump's so worn out, every time it ejects, it pushes more out. It looks like the pump's running out than it is actually spraying.
Now, did you say you had a hard time finding this particular machine?
Uh, no, this machine, I had a hard, I had a hard time finding something comparable from a different meaning factor.
How long does something like this last?
Well, that machine's twenty-seven years old, so I'd like to get twenty-seven years out of this one.
I mean, it'll, it's, it's gonna last as long as you give it the run of the maintenance to it and everything. I mean, they're, they're built.
What's the warranty on it?
Yeah, it's one of them. They'll take care of it. I mean, you gotta read like the owner's manual now that you're doing chipper.
But this isn't something that you're gonna drive down.
You said you need to read the instructions unlike you did with the chipper.
What was wrong with that?
You weren't at the meeting last time.
Didn't read the instructions.
You couldn't get it started. There were so many safety options.
Who couldn't get started? Said you had to figure out the safety.
Anyway.
So this is something that you're gonna drive down Highway 30, right?
You can, you can ride on the back of it. We're gonna strike.
It goes six miles per hour on Highway 30 because he's gotta strike the lines on Highway 30.
We're gonna have to strap those lines next year.
Okay.
Or this year. Or if it gets paid, it'll be in a bit. It'll get struck.
We're starting by that.
But next year we'll have to.
It goes six miles per hour.
We don't, I mean, we don't have any other option. I mean, unless we.
Unless you wanna get out there with a chain of options. Or. I mean, we need, we need some Highway 30.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, for the, yeah.
Well, Brandon, you have the money for it? Just say yes or no.
Yes, I would suggest that we use some of the money we're saving for doing things in-house for that.
I know. We, we've talked about this for eight years.
Motion to approve the purchase of the sprayer?
The motion.
I second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
That's why I said opposed. Discussion of possible action on bucket truck repairs.
Do you have that quote from Rexco? Yes. So we're supposed to have this inspected annually and, uh, add to the duration. We started losing some seals on it while we were using it because we overworked it. Now granted, we know the machine we were buying when we bought. Um, we need the machine. We can't replace the machine for the repair cost. So this is, this is what it's gonna cost to get, to get the seals, hydraulic seals and stuff fixed in the boot. We still have a sway bar length underneath that stops the sway from when you're fully extended. That is right at a thousand dollars for those that I haven't been able to get the quote printed to me on. So that would be additional to this.
So you're looking at.
Is this the sixty-nine forty? And that's everything?
Eight thousand.
Minus, minus a thousand.
That's second.
Minus a thousand?
No, we, it's not included in this, cause I have a.
So you're looking at about eight thousand. Um, I think this bucket truck, it is tremendous for, I mean, you know, especially I, I noticed it out on Highway 30 when they were changing the fifty-fives to forty-fives and stuff like that. I mean, I'd rather see him working out of a bucket truck than on a ladder anytime.
Well, what are you gonna do? You have a piece of equipment. You need to maintain it. I mean, that's what's.
When did we buy this?
Uh, I think about, what, four or five years ago. Yep. We got it from Junction, the other four. Oh, we got this one from Lurker. Yeah. So I thought it was closer to eight, eight years.
Has it really been that long?
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, it doesn't always a dime. The amount of trees that we've taken down with it. I know we did a ton just this spring, summer, flying to speed limit signs to put up well. Where it really went bad is putting up the cameras, just when the seals wouldn't hold the bucket. So that's why we had to send it in because it's not usable now.
Motion to approve the repairs, including the other thousand dollars that's not on here.
A motion of second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, discussion of possible approval.
Travis, don't come to the next meeting.
Discussion of possible approval of twenty-eighty with Lake County in reference to business thirty paving project. Dave, you wanna do this one?
Sure. So we had reached out to Lynn County and also spoke with LL Pellin, who was a little bitter on the business thirty project. And recognizing that, um, it's a ten minute higher than we anticipated on our portion. And knowing that we have that section that is half in Lynn County and half in Lisbon, we asked Lynn County if they could contact Pellin and find out if they'd be agreeable doing that quarter mile stretch that's in both parts for the same prices that the county received from Pellin. They, uh, spoke to Pellin. Pellin was agreeable to doing that. They drafted twenty-eighty agreement. This would be from just east of Dollar General out to the east city limits. And the cost for that, the construction cost is seventy-two, eight thirty-three, sixty-one. And there's another five thousand, one hundred sixty-two, fifty-two. That would be the county's administration fees for, um, the design and instruction administration on this. Seems like a pretty good way to get that section done at the prices that the county got, which were more payable than what we received. And, uh, we can reject ours since we have a few other things that we're looking to do and we can talk about that in the next item. But I wanted to at least present this as an option for the city to get that, um, that section that's happening, city half in county taking care of. So if we come back later, we don't have to worry about trying to sort that out. This is a better situation for the city and the county both, going this route for that segment.
I'm gonna, I mean, you said it was, you know, that they agreed to do it at the Pellin cost. And it's gonna kind of tie into your next one too. Why wouldn't they agree to do the whole thing at the Pellin cost or at the county cost? Let's give them the whole, let it go all of Lisbon, you know?
Well, we have to rebid the project in order to get the prices adjusted. We can't award it, um, on negotiated prices. We have to, uh, either award the prices we received and then try to negotiate, uh, some sort of a change order, which in talking to Pellin, even if we're looking at bidding later this fall, they don't see the prices changing from what they gave us on the most recent bid. They are willing to hold the prices they gave the county for this joint section, but they, they wouldn't do the whole thing for that. Okay, you made that pretty clear.
Do you have a motion for, uh?
Did you give, Dave, did you say what the price, uh?
Total price is seventy-eight, two ninety-six, thirteen.
But what was that portion under our bid? I know that we build the county back. Wasn't like one twenty-five was gonna be our portion?
Uh, we had just in the materials, the rock and the asphalt and whatnot, when we did the evaluation, we were about sixty-six thousand for our half. Uh, and that, that doesn't include a lot of the miscellaneous things that we have to accrue rate, like the traffic control, mobilization, um, some of the higher value items. So we had done just a very generic evaluation of the district based on materials. And we were about eight thousand dollars higher just from materials, using our prices than the county prices.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion to have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion of possible action on business thirty storm improvement quotation.
Did we have one in between there?
Oh, sorry about that. Discussion of possible action in reference to business thirty paving project.
So this is still open. We tabled this previously and the motion would be to reject bids on the business thirty paving project and we'll be bidding again later if we decided to do so.
Motion to reject the bids?
A motion to have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Discussion of possible action on business thirty storm improvement quotation.
This is east of the entrance to the high school on business thirty. There's a culvert that, uh, was failing. We did an inspection. We have a sinkhole there a number of times in the past. And we're trying to fight that for a while with DOT. They did repair on it at one point, but it seems to be happening again. So now this is our roadway. We have a culvert that we need to fix. And this is included in the estimates that, um, we gave to the DOT for the transfer jurisdiction cost. Uh, we did put this out for bids, anticipating that we would reject, uh, the bids for the overall project. And we received two votes on this. One was from Breckie and the other was from Boomerang. Boomerang was at seventy thousand, nine hundred ten. Breckie was at forty-two, five thirty-eight. Um, the bulk of the cost on Boomerang was mobilization for thirty thousand. Breckie was at about ten thousand. That was a little higher than we thought on, on Breckie's yet. So our estimate was low over thirty thousand. Uh, same we have two bids and this seems to be the, uh, current pricing. Um, Breckie is the low at forty-two, five thirty-eight. And Travis, I think you're in favor of moving forward with this, correct?
Yeah.
What do you guys want to do?
We could get anybody else to bid on this here. I mean, I was making phone calls left and right. Eric was trying to be a K to get people to bid. I just wasn't happy.
I mean, it's, you know, when we did our budget in December, January and everything, we had no idea what cost of stuff's gonna be and, I mean, we still don't. I mean, so I mean, anything that we thought was gonna be ten thousand dollars, it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars. I mean, this is just the way it is right now.
So what, what all is being done there then?
We are pulling out some pavement, uh, ripping out the old culvert, putting in a new culvert, putting the pavement back, putting some sod down. And then there are some miscellaneous costs like traffic control and, uh, mobilization survey and that sort of thing. So.
So you're, this is going underneath Highway 30 exactly? Okay. Understood.
You guys have any questions? Got a motion to do it or not do it?
Who's, who's this quote? The seventy thousand?
Uh, Boomerang.
Motion to approve the bid to Breckie.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Um, when would they start this?
Says ten days.
What he said, um, if he can't get done before July, cause he said he was pretty slammed right now. Um, he's gonna do it, not before July, but before Sally Crowe Day. He's gonna wait until the week after Sally Crowe Day would come. Cause I don't want fans tore up at all during the power outage.
All right. Well, I'm gonna go now.
All right. Third and final reading of ordinance oh four, twenty twenty-one, chapter seventy-eight golf carts.
Motion to approve the third final reading.
Second.
Motion second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sarah? Resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, allowing the City of Mount Vernon Golf Cart ATV registration stickers to be valid in Lisbon.
I move that they're valid in Lisbon.
Second.
Motion second, Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Third and final reading, ordinance oh-five, twenty-twenty-one, increasing water rates.
Motion to approve third reading.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
And with that, um, could you give us a report, I'm not saying every month, but every couple months or something like that? You could either do it in person or you could just write it up and give it to Christina and just let us know.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll be in your office tomorrow.
All right, correspondence.
Aye.
City engineer report.
Yes, just a few things. Uh, we're still waiting on DNR to come out and do the well site survey, to get that cleared. I'm anticipating that to happen in time now. I'll reach out to them again this week to see if they can update the schedule. We're still waiting on the CDBG application to get completed. And Brandon, what's the status on those, um, recon surveys?
So we're sitting at a hundred and forty-seven, um, surveys completed. Um, I will be going door to door either tomorrow or Wednesday to, um, I think I have twenty-five on my list, and then they just sent, uh, like fifteen more addresses. Um, we've, I've been at the doors, we've made phone conversation with several and still no response, so we have more addresses to check. Uh, the survey, you need a hundred percent compliance, so we need like two hundred and twenty-five surveys completed. So everyone you send back, you have to get, or everyone you send out, you have to get back. So we're at a hundred and forty-seven, they were happy with, with our progress. There's a July first deadline for the grant and then an October first deadline. And, um, so obviously we're gonna try for the grants on October first. And hopefully we'll have all our surveys completed. So if you haven't filled one out, please turn that in.
Are the people that you're contacting saying, "Oh, I haven't, I'm sorry, I forgot," or are they saying, "Oh, come on?"
Yeah, or some people have said, "I didn't get it, can you send me a new one?" Um, so we've, we've resent probably twenty. Like I said, I have twenty, about twenty-five that I'm gonna go door to door with in the next couple of days. Um, so hopefully between that and the ones that Marshall sent, we should be pretty close to, to our numbers, so. And they trickle in, so. There are still coming in, like one day they were eating out in the box one morning, so. We do have them in the entryway and again, it's a hundred percent confidential. Just come in, stick it in the overnight drop, he doesn't ask for your name or anything like that, or address, or any of that. So, we'll get there.
So how do you know who didn't send one back?
You don't. So if you, she, she went through the whole list and there's some that have and some that don't. And, um, so it's been, it's been a process and Marshall will be glad when this is over.
She, she's called him and said, "Have you did this?"
Right.
And said, "Yes."
And there's no way, you can't mark them, you can't, she checks them off. It's completely random, so.
The last thing I have is that we're still coordinating with YET on our plans with respect to the well, so whenever that gets completed, we should be able to un-lasersite. I have to leave it.
Anybody got anything for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Public support director report.
I got nothing.
Yeah, you shouldn't. Uh, partial record report.
Uh, we just finished up the summer sports, we're moving into fall sports starting. We'll start introductions for soccer and play football in July. Uh, probably the second week or third week in July. It's about all I've got.
Please board.
Just wanted to publicly thank all the businesses and patrons and residents that, we just had our golf outing this last weekend for the K-9 program. Um, had a really good time, weather was great and, uh, Mary actually had a pretty good shot, so got a prize out of that also. So that was a great time and just appreciate all the public support for the K-9 program.
All right, heard you.
Um, two things. Uh, one, I want to say it's Friday night, uh, there was a funnel cloud east of town. Uh, they paid us out for storm watch, I don't know if you saw on Twitter and everything, but, um, it wasn't very big, but it was a funnel cloud indeed. Um, we did have guys out. The reason why the whistle didn't blow is by the time that we come to the station and went out on storm watch, it was well into Jones County, uh, northeast of Lisbon, so, um, there was no threat to anybody here, so that's why our whistles didn't go off and it wasn't on the ground. So just, I had one person ask, so I just wanted to put that out.
That really was a funnel cloud?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The National Weather Service made a report later on that night that those were spotted amongst a lot of areas and those are the ones that never really-
Pulled their funnels?
Pulled their funnels and that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
Um, and also, uh, we did get one member certified, um, through his work at a critical incident stress debrief. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but if you ever have a call or situation that, um, like a bad accident or something like that, that can linger with people for a while, for a couple of days after as a responder, if they're having a hard time dealing with it, um, we have a trained, trained individual in-house now that can actually do that here. So, you know, usually you call around and they, they get somebody to come out and you gotta set up the time, but it's really nice to have one in-house where even if it was individually, he's willing to, to speak to them about this. And so I just wanted to make mention of that, 'cause I think it's a huge benefit to the city for that, so. That is all I have fire related.
City, uh, city manager.
I want to thank the city staff for the help of the bulky item pickup. Travis said, uh, like his words were, it kinda was weird. Uh, he just said it went really good. Um, everybody showed up with the, the, um, dumpsters, they're there early, got everything set up, um, it went very smooth. So thanks to all the staff for that.
City, uh, city manager.
I want to thank the city staff for the help of the bulky item pickup. Travis said, uh, like his words were, it kinda was weird. Uh, he just said it went really good. Um, everybody showed up with the, the, um, dumpsters, they're there early, got everything set up, um, it went very smooth. So thanks to all the staff for that. We're gonna be working hopefully this week on the ditches, getting those mowed along thirty North Washington. Um, so we'll get that done pending the weather. I've been just working on getting the budget wrapped up, moving some things around. Um, so that's been going well, Christine's been helping out, so thanks to her. Travis and guys in Grayton have been working on new, uh, fixtures at the park, put a couple in down at City Park, and then I believe there's a merry-go-round going in in No Block Park, so. Could be activity there. The third camera's been installed downtown in the History Center. I haven't looked at it, but it's gonna have, it's a stationary camera, wide zoom, that way we get the whole intersection. As you remember from last time, we might have had to add one because there wasn't one camera good to get the whole intersection. This one does, he said it's really nice, so, um, I'll be able to look at it, he just stopped in today at like five o'clock, so that's done.
Brandon, where are all, are the cameras installed so far? I mean, have we done anything at the park yet or?
Uh, Drayton, are they, you're right. I know that they're waiting for mechanics to look at it, not there yet, okay. So we have the pavilion downtown, three at the History Center, the one, they got these on the system here and then they've installed the one right outside the front door. The tractor, the traction rack is in. Um, we're still waiting on the rear mower, which is probably one of the more important pieces of it. And, um, so they said it's, I, I've actually went out there and it was all stacked up against the wall and he said, "All that stuff is yours." So, um, if we have use for the tractor, we just gotta give them a couple of days' notice and we can go out and they can, they can deliver what they have, but they're waiting to, waiting to get it all ready.
Mower, it's mower improvement, isn't it?
Yeah. Fox over by the pond, I'm sure this has been a topic that many have heard. Um, I did call the, the DNR, uh, last week, talk to the, the regional ranger for this area. Um, I know that fox may look like it has mange and it might. He was not worried about it. Um, he said, "Most of the time the fox is more scared of you than you are of them." Um, we've not received any reports of any bites or any chasing chickens or dogs or any of that stuff. So, um, he said, "If you don't have that, just let nature be nature." Um, they really don't want to get involved with it. Chief, do you have any?
We've got, we, we deal with this occasionally as well. Remember, we get several dens scattered around town, around the college, around the quarry, different things like that. And some of them get mange routinely, it's normal from that standpoint. Um, they're pretty accustomed to people being around, so they're not like running away from you and stuff like that, but if you yell or something like that, they're gonna vacate the area, get out of there. They don't want to be around you. And like Brandon said, our big, what you start looking for is if there's aggressive behavior or something else going on. They're foxes, they're big foxes, they're out prowling and hunting and, and unlike, um, some other animals, you see them in the daytime, uh, moving around, where at nighttime you don't see them as often because it's dark, so. Uh, completely normal, we can, you know, if we continue, if somebody has issues, call us and we'll take it on a case by case basis, but.
Drayton's been working on the, the plastic coverings on the poles over the park. I know it's kind of tedious and monotonous, but he's got about thirty of them painted so far. So if you go by there and look, they look really nice and the plan is to have them ready for Sauk Rock Days, so, um, thanks to Drayton for that. Uh, the last thing is just remind the city hall, we close Monday the fifth for, fourth of July.
You got anything for Brandon? Christina, you got anything?
Just working on, uh, the fiscal year and start of the new one.
Did you have a good vacation?
I did, thank you.
Go on, let's work forwards, Travis.
Nothing.
Nate? Uh, I don't have anything this week.
Good.
Just my fault that there's three empty seats gonna be up here, so I think, I don't know, I remember, I think they've already asked me in this August or something.
Yes, the league pamphlets came out today and they posted it on Facebook.
John?
Uh, just like to encourage people to fill out those surveys if you haven't already. Also to encourage people to trim the branches over sidewalks where the tree's growing in the parking or on your property. You should be trimming it so people can walk under it without ducking. We don't expect you to get up on a ladder to trim them and risk your life, but from the ground, trim them up. Thank you.
Sarah?
Um, thank you to the city workers who helped with the, um, drop off, Jeff Travis and your crew. Stop it. Tell you.
I just wanted to say, I did golf in the K-9 outing yesterday, there's a lot, there were quite a few teams, I think there were like five short, five, ten short. Um, a lot of people I did not have a clue who they were, I mean, but I had a great time. That's the fox, I mean, I've, I've actually seen people stop and will just watch it. I mean, I've seen, so, I mean. Um, we talked about, Brandon talked about mowing ditches this week. Are you still planning on doing that, Travis? We're going to rent like one of those mowers that you put on the front of your skid loader to do the retention part.
Actually, I'm gonna have, uh, I talked to Jordan after I talked to you, and I'm gonna have them do that.
So they're gonna use one of those mowers?
Yeah. I think he's a ranger. I feel a lot better.